Look at this thing.
Order, order, order. The members of Clonan Norris and Ayew.
Domine dirigere nos. Amen.
Before moving to consider the items on today's agenda, may I remind members present that this meeting is being recorded in accordance with the City Corporation's filming and recording protocol. The right honourable the Lord Mayor apologises that he is unable to preside over your meeting today as he is abroad on an official engagement. Alderman Sir Andrew Palmley has been appointed Lord Mayor locum tenens for this meeting, of the court and the warrant of appointment is hereby delivered in. Under item one, the names of those members who have presented apologies for today's meeting have been recorded. At item two, does any honourable member have any additional interests to declare in respect of the items to be considered? Seeing none, at item three, starting on page five, are the minutes of the last court. The question is that these minutes are correctly recorded, that is to agree. On the contrary, the Lord Mayor declares the motion to be carried. At item four, there is no report. Under item five, the Chairman of the Policy and Resources Committee.
My Lord Mayor, I hope every member of this Honourable Court has had a restful and restorative recess break and I welcome you all back. For many across the Corporation, the summer did not provide a chance to recharge and I want to take a moment to thank all those involved in supporting the response to wildfires across our open spaces, most notably in Epping Forest at the end of August. Indeed, being in the city this week, it doesn't necessarily feel like we're all fully back to work. The Tube strikes affecting the capital this week have certainly stunted our efforts to encourage thousands of commuters to return to the office after their summer holidays. As the City Corporation, we know we have to do more to really earn the commute, one of the key aims of our Destination City Programme. And for our part, our officer teams are thinking creatively and working in partnership with business on making the Square Mile the most appealing and vibrant place for our significant worker population, over 678,000 strong and 25% up since before Covid. This includes the launch of our consolidated calendar of events, which I recently wrote to you all about, and which brings together into one place for the first time all the activities on offer that make the city such a great place to live, work and explore. I will continue to bang the drum to promote the city as an attractive destination for workers, residents and potential occupiers, including next week at the London Real Estate Forum. Last night, we held our third City Question Time of the year, a key part of our residential reset priority. Alongside Jackie Webster, Lead Member for Residential Engagement, I was delighted to announce a new City Living Resident Card. The card, available to every resident, offers exclusive opportunities, deals and benefits and will expand as residents and businesses provide feedback over time. Turning to international matters, last week I travelled to India to meet with ministers and business leaders in Delhi, Hyderabad and Mumbai. And as we reach one year since the launch of the UK-India infrastructure financing bridge, I continued that engagement in the UK last Monday with the launch of our first year report, when I welcomed a delegation from the Indian government. This showcased the work of the City Corporation and the Indian government in bridging the finance gap and facilitating British expertise towards India's growth. On the back of the recent free trade agreement between our two countries, we have an incredible opportunity to increase trade and collaboration, another focus of my work last week. My mission with this initiative is clear: to build on its foundation and unlock even greater opportunities, particularly in financial and professional services. Work has continued at pace over the summer on the new investment hub and I'm looking forward to its official launch as the newly entitled Office for Investment Financial Services this autumn. This will be a true public-private partnership and the City Corporation is at its heart. The new hub will be based right here in our Guildhall. We have been the government's partner of choice for this hub since we called for its creation in our vision for economic growth and as the country's primary convener of the FPS sector. It's a privilege for us to lead this initiative. I look forward to working with our new City Minister Lucy Rigby MP and new Investment Minister Jason Stockwood alongside the entire reshuffled cabinet over the next few weeks, promoting our Square Mile at the various party conferences. My Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Chairman. Moving then to item six, this concerns the appointments to committees and outside bodies. As members can see, there are no contested nominations on today's summons and so there is no need to conduct any ballots this day. Accordingly, the Lord Mayor declares the member listed to be appointed as set out on your summons at paragraphs A to C. At item seven, on page 23, is a report of City of London Police Authority Board, members, members, City of Police, thank you, Authority Board proposing the reappointment of an independent external member, that is to agree. On the contrary, the Lord Mayor declares the report to be carried. At item eight, on page 25, is the list of applicants for the Freedom. The motion is that the several persons named be admitted to the Freedom accordingly and that, members, is to agree. On the contrary, the Lord Mayor declares the motion to be duly carried. At item nine, there is a motion submitted by Mark Wheatley proposing the creation of a working party to explore housing governance. The full terms of the motion are set out on pages 33 and 34. In terms of the rules of engagement, this motion will last for not more than an hour, 60 minutes, understanding order 12-6, and members may speak twice to the motion, except for the Policy Chairman, who, understanding order 11 subsection 3, can speak more than twice to clarify any matters of policy. Propusers of the motion and amendments have five minutes to speak, to open and five minutes for closing remarks. Mr Wheatley then, to introduce the motion.
Town Clerk, thank you. My Lord Mayor, in June, this court acknowledged our historic neglect of social housing. We described that as a scandal. We also committed, and I quote, "to push all options to fund the acceleration of renovation of our housing estates." Since that motion was passed, officers have been acting at some pace. Members were updated on this informally earlier this week and we will have formal guidance at our November meeting, so I understand. That motion is most welcome. It recognised a historic neglect and it set an aspiration to address that through resourcing. However, the movers of this motion believe that without correct governance structures, that resourcing will be to no good end, or at least to an insufficient one. Because if the funding is simply like the water that flows irrigating a field that we've neglected for too many years, then the governance structures are the channels through which that water flows and we are run by grand committees. Whether you like it or not, this is a body that functions through grand committees with authority and responsibility. And at the moment, we do not have a grand committee for our housing or the entirety of our housing structures and provision. We do for the Barbican, the best-heeled part of our provision, but not those who live outside the Square Mile or those who live elsewhere within it. So we who have moved this motion would like to address that. And if members can cast their minds back to 2020, those of us who are here, Lord Lizvein undertook a review of our entire governance structures and he recommended that we have a housing committee. We considered that over the course of about a year and we decided to defer that decision to this civic year. So now, moment and historic duty require us to take a decision. The movers of this motion are not prejudging that decision. We are recommending and seeking the Court's approval to create a structure and a process through which the best possible decision can be taken. We wish a number of members to convene, to go deep into these issues, supported by officers, supported by expert guidance, which will include residents, and in a deliberative, consensual and measured fashion, consider the evidence before them. That should not be contentious. That is all we ask, is that members are convened at a reasonable moment, allowed sufficient time to delve deep and then report back to this full court. So my Lord Mayor, we believe this motion is consensual. We believe it is reasonable and we believe it is appropriate. So it gives me great pleasure to move it formally and call on colleagues to rise and address this matter. Thank you, my Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Wheatley. Charles Edward Lord, as the second to the motion, would you wish to speak?
My Lord Mayor, it gives me enormous pleasure to second the motion. The City of London Corporation has a proud record of being the provider of municipal housing. We were one of the first, if not the first, local authority in London to provide municipal housing. But we have allowed our eye to leave the ball and as a consequence of which, we have a situation with our housing stock that is lamentable and that was acknowledged by this Honourable Court earlier in the year. And one of the reasons that I think we have taken our eye off the ball is because of the governance arrangements for housing. My Lord Mayor, other than you and perhaps maybe half a dozen of us in this room, I suspect no one was around or interested in the changes that were made in the early part of 2002 to create what is now the Community and Children's Services Committee and at the same time to merge the Housing Department with Social Services and Education. It was probably the right thing to do at the time, but actually, in hindsight, it probably wasn't. In terms of the department itself, putting Social Services in with housing and education meant that the statutory director, now the executive director for the department, has to be a social worker, as a consequence of which, we lost leadership at the executive level from someone who had a background in housing management. And at a committee level, we have a committee which has so many responsibilities that the Community and Children's Services Committee covers most of our local authority functions. And as a consequence of which, it can't provide the level of scrutiny and oversight that our housing stock requires. And I think that's one of the reasons that regrettably, yet we are in a position today where we have not been as good a landlord as we should have been. Mr Wheatley in proposing the motion drew our attention to the fact that Lord Lizvein, in his very measured report on the city's governance, should have a housing committee which would cover both our social housing stock but also the Barbican residential estate. We postponed consideration of that.
Time, Edward.
No, no, red light.
I'm just saying, 30 seconds for time.
Okay.
Thank you.
We were, we postponed discussion of that. Now, I believe, is the time for us to return to that discussion. I think that this motion with the amendment-
Edward Lord, we are out of time.
You interrupted me, Town Clerk, so perhaps I can have five seconds more.
Edward Lord, we are out of time. It was momentarily when I did interrupt you.
Please support the motion.
Thank you, Charles Edward Lord. The motion then is before the court. Does any member wish to speak? The Chairman of Policy and Resources.
My Lord Mayor, from speaking to honourable members over the past few weeks, it does seem to me that there is some appetite for a proposed working party to investigate the governance around our housing arrangements. Equally, many colleagues have relayed concerns about timing and not diverting focus from ongoing efforts to fix the estates. Therefore, I would like to move an amendment to the motion, which I hope Mr Wheatley will support. That amendment has two substantive parts. Firstly, to alter membership of the working party, amending 2B and deleting 2C. And secondly, to specify when the working party will first meet, amending 2D. I have prepared this amendment and given it to the Town Clerk so that this could be circulated to all members and I hope you are all received a copy of it. I propose we amend the proposed membership point 2B to ensure input from the relevant committees. That is to say, the Chair or Deputy Chair of the Community and Children's Services Committee, the Housing Management and Armed Houses Subcommittee, the Barbican Residential Committee and the Policy and Resources Committee, those responsible for and knowledgeable of housing and of course, in the case of PNR governance, within their brief. I'm also proposing the deletion of 2C, which specifies a number of residential members. The inclusion of those ex officio members will place some residential members onto the working party, but substantively, this relates to city residents only. And it is important to note that many of those living in our housing live outside of the city. I also think it's important that we don't artificially narrow our engagement aspirations with those living in our housing by virtue of having a small number of residential members on the working party. We need to be broad and inclusive in that engagement and listen to what all our residents think. And I want to see a full consultation with residents as part of the working party's activities. Regarding 2D, I'm conscious that we have limited resource. Our housing team is working on the recently announced social housing inspection and progressing long overdue repairs to our estates, laying the groundwork, I hope, for our transformative housing investment programme, of which more in due course. Our governance and member services team, given the number of committees, are also at capacity, especially until they fill vacancies. Therefore, I'm proposing that we alter point 2D to amend the start date of this working party. This would allow for us to properly allocate the required resource-
Chairman, chairman, 30 seconds please.
I hope-
Apologies and error on our side. Please continue.
Thank you, indeed, my Lord Mayor. This would allow for us to properly allocate the required resource from officers in both departments. I hope this makes clear that this is not a case, not a case, of kicking the can down the road. The Honourable Member acknowledges that moving this motion in this way circumvents standing orders 26.1 and 26.2. Those standing orders relate to the normal approval processes for working parties whereby they would require a business plan which should include the resourcing arrangements from consideration by your Policy and Resources Committee. I hope members concur that this proposed solution will give officers time to organise resourcing arrangements for this working party, should this Honourable Court choose to support it today. My Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Chairman, and apologies again for the technical error. An amendment has been moved and the terms of that amendment are in the hands of honourable members, proposing changes in respect of clauses 2B and 2D of the motion and deleting clause 2C. Is the amendment seconded? Deputy James Thompson.
My Lord Mayor, I believe the amendments put before us today by the Policy Chairman ensure that this working party has the right membership and is sufficiently resourced in order to explore all options for the best way forward for housing governance. Our governance arrangements currently reflect the diverse nature of our housing. As the Chairman has said, it can be easy for some to forget the large number of our housing tenants that we house live in boroughs around London and not the Square Mile. In February 2024, your Community and Children's Services Committee agreed that we should undertake a comprehensive review of these governance arrangements in 2026. I agree that having that review guided by the relevant and interested members in the form of this working party with the membership proposed by the Policy Chairman is the right approach. Whether this working party resolves that these current arrangements are the right ones or determines that we need something new is for that working group to examine and bring back. The salient point is that it reaches its recommendations through deep and proper engagement with our residents, both within the city and beyond, and it listens carefully to their views. Ultimately, we must ensure that we are best positioned to deliver for the residents across all of our housing provision. An important step has been the appointment of our new chief, our new officer team that is in place, who I know are working at pace to improve conditions across our housing stock, together with members on our various committees dealing with housing, who I also know are working hard to deliver for those living in the homes that we provide. The proposed extension of time is necessary to allow our officer teams to progress this work, to focus on the inspection that is currently in process and to find the funding solution, all of which are moving at pace. With all of that in mind, as someone who is very, has been very involved in the delivery of affordable housing, I am very supportive of this motion with the amendments proposed by the Policy Chairman, which will create a more effective and efficient working party to carry out this review. I know members today will probably have a range of different views on that outcome and the outcome of the review, but I don't think that is for us to decide today. I hope with that in mind, members will support this motion. Thank you, my Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Deputy. The amendment is now before the court. Does any member, and just a reminder to members, we are debating the amendment and not the substantive motion. Does any member wish to debate said amendment? I see Mr Wheatley.
Thank you, Town Clerk. I think the amendment improves the motion. It addresses both composition and timing concerns that have been raised, so I'm happy to take it, Town Clerk, and to recommend that the amended motion be debated by the Court. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr Wheatley. Does any other member wish to debate the proposed amendment specifically? As I said before, there will be an opportunity, if the amendment falls, to debate the substantive motion in due course. Mr Adam Hogg.
My Lord Mayor, I welcome the Policy Chair's amendment. I'm not sure it goes far enough. Two years ago, I would have supported Mark Wheatley's motion, but things have moved on. Action has been taken to start addressing the dreadful state of our housing estate. I speak as Deputy Chair of the Major Works Renewal Board for the Golden Lane Estate. This group of officers, members and residents has been set up to provide scrutiny and oversight of this complex programme. Golden Lane residents need certainty. To suggest different governments' arrangements just as the project is starting will further undermine any confidence they still have that finally their problems are being addressed. Servicing the working party will put unwelcome demands on already stretched officers, distracting them from delivering real change. So I support the amendment as far as it goes, but setting up a working party should only take place when the programme is well embedded and residents recognise that their needs are being properly addressed. I believe we must put our blinkers on and make real change happen, my Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Hogg. Mr Woodhouse.
My Lord Mayor, I note the Chairman of Policy's comment about kicking this down the road, and I would like to make a request that under 2D, that every effort should be made, please, to bring forward the dates of March next year. I feel this is an extremely important part of this negotiation. Thank you, my Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Woodhouse. Mr Ali.
My Lord Mayor, I rise in support of this motion, and I think it's a sensible way to go forward. However, there are a couple of things I really wish that we take note of. Firstly, as an organisation, we own property within our jurisdiction. We own property, housing property, that is, outside our jurisdiction. And the third part is there is also another housing association within our jurisdiction. And we've had this conversation, Chairman, and I think this opportunity should be taken into consideration to make sure we, we address all of those challenges. Otherwise, where we have some leaseholders who have a different position as opposed to tenants, and then other housing associations as well, lots of things can fall through the gap. So my request would be that we take into consideration something like the Guinness Housing Association, which is within our jurisdiction, but we are not landlords of, but it's in terrible situation as well. And I think a collective approach like this will give us that one opportunity to address all of those aspects, and I would very much request some reassurances around that, my Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Ali. Any other member? Mr Peter Dunphy.
Thank you. So I support the amendment and I support the motion. I think what Monsieur Ali has just said is absolutely right. We have, as a council, interest in housing in very many ways. And what I would also like to do is to ask of the working party in advance to not just take note of the Lizvein recommendation that there should be a dedicated housing committee, but he also very strongly recommended that there shouldn't, in general, be a proliferation of new committees in the corporation, and that this committee, if created and is welcome, should be done in such a way that there is not a net increase in the number of committees, which would also assist in terms of the issue of officer dedication and officer time, my Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Deputy. Deputy Helen Fentiman.
My Lord Mayor, it's clear to me that some members of this Court really do wish to consider the governance arrangements for all of our housing estates, which includes the Barbican. Many members will also be aware that there are several significant differences in the funding arrangements and the priorities of our estates. This was understood by the Barbican Residential Committee and Community Services Committee some between eighteen months, two years ago, and at that time, in recognition of those differences, the management structures were separated so that we could specifically focus on the issues pertinent to the Barbican estate and those that were quite different for social housing estates. We are, as you've heard at the moment, in undertaking a massive and extensive work plan for social housing and the Barbican estate. We've heard about that in this Court very recently, over the last few months. We also know that we're right in the middle of a housing safety regulation inspection. It is critical to us that we do not take officers off that important work and that we secure the best possible outcome for our housing. For these reasons, I cannot support the motion as written. However, I believe that the amendment goes some way to address the concerns that I and others have, not least timing. We have already given commitment to consider governance in 2026. This change in timing honours the commitment that has previously been given. It will also ensure that the officers who are part of the critical work will not be distracted over the next few months at the most important time. Finally, I would want to ensure that the widest possible engagement of residents from all estates are included in some way in the review. They are all important, they all have references to, comments to make, and it's not just those within the square mile. It's important that all of our estates are consulted and part of this process. So if the Court is minded to support a review of governance and agrees to this amendment, then I feel much more able to support this as written today. Thank you, my Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Deputy. Any other member? Charles, before, ah, Gabby Roberts Shaw. Thank you.
My Lord Mayor, I stand here in favour of the motion and the amendment, which makes the possibility of a housing committee so long needed more in our grasp. I represent residents in the square mile on the Golden Lane estate, who have been humbled and have suffered because of the neglect and had a housing committee been considered twenty-five years ago. I am fully of the opinion that the situation we find ourselves in and we're having to sort out now would not have happened. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms Roberts Shaw. So before moving to closing remarks, I was, Anne Holmes. We'll get there eventually, no doubt.
My Lord Mayor, I'll take very little time now. I support both the amendment and the motion. I just would like to put in a caution that if we're setting up a housing committee, we do bear in mind that that also should be looking at development issues as well as maintenance of our estates, and that if we're calling it a housing committee, we also have to incorporate into its purview over fifty per cent of the city's residents who do not live on any of our estates. And those are just things I would not like us to lose sight of, my Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Deputy. Any other member? Ah, Mercy Hagerty. Thank you.
My Lord Mayor, thank you very much for bringing this motion, which I think is brilliant, and it's so, so necessary. I would just very quickly like to pay tribute to the officers who, despite the inadequate funding and governance arrangements, the ones that I've worked closely with, so the Director of Children's Services, the Director of the Barbican Estate, and the Director, the Assistant Director of Housing are exceptional and have worked incredibly hard for a number of years, so I'd just like that, and I'm delighted to support the motion.
Thank you, Mercy. Looking around. Now then, before moving to closing remarks, Charles Edward Lord, as you know, under standing order 11.4, you have a second occasion to speak. So if you feel that you were timed out, I'm inviting you to speak for your second time, if you so wish.
That's very kind, my Lord Mayor, but actually, no, I think I covered everything that I needed to. Thank you.
Thank you, Charles Edward Lord. Closing remarks, the proposer of the amendment, the Chairman of Policy and Resources.
My Lord Mayor, may I start by thanking all members who participated in speaking on the amendment, and I think, and I want to thank them for what seems to be a broad range of agreement. I hope we'll find out when we come to the vote. First of all, can I just say to Mr Hogg that I notice he speaks against it, but basically, I believe it's important, if we are to have any credibility with our resident reset policy whatsoever, that we are seen to be transparent and actually honour our commitments and promises that we previously made to residents. And so I hope that we will be able to demonstrate that we are not going to dictate or direct to our residents what sort of form of governance they have to have without listening to them, without listening to the detailed deliberations of the working party. To Mr Woodhouse, can I say this? Mr Woodhouse, the dates of March are very simply calculated. The housing inspection will not be over until February, and therefore, I've simply taken the next available date, i.e. the beginning of March, allowed for any potential overrun, because we know these things can, which therefore takes it to the end of March. As I say, not kicking the ball down the road, simply doing it for that purpose. Mr Ali, I agree with Mr Ali that we should include all housing views on this. This is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity for us to reach out to all those in housing in the city, from whatever background, to establish their views, and I hope the working party, if it's established, will make sure that its remit is as broad as possible, and particularly, as I've said many times, bringing in the views of all our residents. I think Mr Dunphy is quite right to refer to no proliferation of committees. Committees members are expensive to establish, expensive to resource, and Lord Lizvein, whose report I had to deal with the consultation of over the Covid period, specifically said we had too many committees, we needed to reduce them, and we have. We do not want that trajectory to now go into reverse and start increasing them. That said, this is a one-off committee, it needs to be examined, and if there's justification from the working party, which would obviously have to come back to Policy and Resources who consider governance, and then back to this Court, then we listen to their deliberations in favour or not of another committee. To Helen Fentiman, we did make, of course, as she indicated in her remarks, a commitment to come back to the Court at the beginning of 2026, and we need, we need members to honour that if we are to retain residents' trust that we don't break our word on promises that we already have given. It would be churlish to kill this today and then come back again in January. You know, residents could be forgiven for wondering what on earth we were playing at too. Ms Roberts Shaw, thank you for supporting the motion, because I genuinely believe it discharges our democratic commitments and to those who elect us and put us in this place. To Anne Holmes, I agree. Any housing committee, if it's brought forward, if, and of course, we're not at that stage, this is purely looking at the rights and wrongs and principles or not, should look at development and maintenance. And I thought we finished this discussion and debate on a very, very positive note, which I heartily endorse, that Mercy's tribute to our officers, who really have done an incredible job under huge pressures over the past few years on our housing estates. They are to be absolutely applauded, and I'm so grateful to her for making that point. I hope, in closing, that you will support the amendment, my Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Chairman. Mr Wheatley to reply and close the debate on the amendment.
Town Clerk, I think there's little to add. I hoped that we would commission a working group to go deep. It's clear that members have intelligently taken it broader, and just to pick up on Mercy Hagerty and the Chairman's point, to recognise the good work of officers who've been, in my humble opinion, dealing with inadequate arrangements with almost perfection. So, my Lord Mayor, I'm very pleased to take the motion, I take the amendment and hope that it passes.
Thank you, Wheatley. To remind members then, the amendment before you is set out in full on the hard copy in your hands. In short, it has the effect of specifying that the first meeting of any working party shall take place in March, and revising the proposed composition of the working party such that four of the twelve places are reserved for ex officio roles, and there is no specific allocation for residential members. The amendment is before members and to agree. On the contrary, the Lord Mayor declares the amendment to be carried. We now return to debate the substantive motion as now amended. Does any member wish to speak on the substantive motion as amended? Deputy Fletcher.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I didn't speak on the amendment because it is a considerable improvement on the original motion, and I'm pleased it went past because it does go a long way. But I can't let the main motion go without expressing some deep concerns that I have. It is clear from what the Chair of Community and Children's Services and other members said, that the current group of officers are doing a fantastic job in turning around the supertanker, and as the allocated member for Middlesex Street, I can say I see evidence of this on a daily basis. So, I personally must say, we must make sure, if this motion is passed, that the officers are not distracted from their principal task of getting the current job done. And the proposal of the motion, Mark Wheatley started off by saying, we have an issue with our social housing, so we must make sure that this remains the priority of officers, not being distracted by change of governance. The second thing that deeply concerns me, and I'll say it now, though it won't stop people voting for the motion, because I hope when, if the motion is passed and when the working group gets going, they take this into consideration, is protection of the views of our social housing tenants. Bringing in all of the leaseholder tenants from the Barbican into a committee is going to change the balance. Already on places such as our second biggest seat, I think it is Golden Lane, it's fifty-fifty between leaseholders and tenants, and by the nature of the beast, and I mean, this is no criticism, leaseholders tend to have sharper elbows and louder voices because they have investment in the property. So as this working party carries out its deliberations, if the motion is passed, I ask it, and I ask members to take into account that we must protect the voice of our social housing tenants, who are the most vulnerable within our society. Having said that, I will be voting in favour of the motion, and ask members to do so. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy. Does any other member wish to speak? Mr Williams, thank you.
My Lord Mayor, my concern is that if you're living in a property which has been under-maintained, your priority is probably not a working group. And it seems to me that, for whatever reason, this Court and the Children and Community Services Committee, upon which I've sat since I was elected a year or so ago, it's our failure that has led to this situation over very many years. We should be contrite about that. And secondly, we need to make sure that we're not presenting it as if this is our answer, because it can't be. We're at a moment where the priority needs to be work, not governance. And I'm sorry that a failure of previous governance has led us to the appalling position that we're in, but the solution is not better governance. And at the moment, I'm concerned that members, like me, in a position to do so, better act to hold to account the work that we do in respect of the moment we're in and the need for that development, and that, let's be frank, we need to change from maintenance to renovation. Those two things are very different. We failed at maintenance, and now we're in a position that we need to move to something else. That needs to be the focus, so far as I'm concerned, so I'm going to vote for this motion, but the work is not going to be in this working party. That is to do, as I see it, the maintenance that will come after the renovation, but that renovation is planned to take us ten years at the moment, and my focus, and I hope the focus of members and officers in the corporation, will be to speed that up, not to be in a working party dealing with how we might put in place governance structures to help in ten years' time, my Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Williams. Apologies for the late spot there. Mr Hogg.
Thank you, my Lord Mayor. Can I first support exactly what Mr Williams is saying just now? I'm very much in favour of what he's saying, and I think it's important that we should be looking much longer ahead as to what we're trying to do. The other bit I would just wanted to say, I would have the temerity to correct the Chairman of Policy. I didn't actually oppose the amendment, but I did say was I'm supporting the amendment, but with the caveat that it's, I think it's far too early to set up the committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Hogg. The Chairman of Policy and Resources.
My Lord Mayor, merely to respond to Mr Hogg and to apologise to him for misrepresenting his views to the Court.
Thank you, Chairman. Any other member wish to speak on the item? Seeing none, it's over to you, Mr Wheatley, to reply to the motion as amended and to close the debate. Thank you.
Thank you again, Town Clerk. It's a bit like being at home for me. A lot of people rising to agree with what I propose, but with very little enthusiasm. So please excuse me if I try to summarise the remarks that have been made to the motion as it stands by three excellent members. Mr Fletcher, I've worked alongside you for- Mr Fletcher, I've worked alongside you for a number of years, and my regard for both your head and heart cannot be overstated. You're a wonderful colleague, and your concerns for all residents, I trust if the working group is established, will be taken on board, and your concern that officers need not be distracted, I hope is already addressed by the Chair of Policy's amendment to this motion. Mr Williams and Mr Hogg, if I might put you together for a moment. All I would say is, this working group is certainly not the answer, but I think it's the group through which this wider court will find an answer. For 30 years or more, we've allowed residents to be neglected. For five years or so, we've allowed Lord Lizvein's question to go unanswered, and the working group will find the answer, I hope and trust. So, Town Clerk, Lord Mayor, and members all, and officers who've supported sharpening this motion, I would like to thank you and hope that at the end of this debate, we will decide and resolve to address the question of governance for housing once and for all. Thank you, my Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Wheatley. So, members, the motion is before you as amended and is to agree. On the contrary, the Lord Mayor declares the motion as amended to be carried. At item 10, starting on page 35, is a report of the City of London Police Authority Board presenting the annual report for 2024/2025. The Chair to introduce the item.
My Lord Mayor, Honourable Members, you'll be glad to know that I will not require red light or extra time to introduce this annual report. I'm very pleased to present the City of London Police's annual report. It gives a good overview of our progress and where we stand today. Recorded antisocial behaviour has continued to fall. The city has maintained the lowest rates of serious violence in the capital, and outcomes remain well above the national average. The city police are also focused on tackling everyday crime that affects people: shoplifting, theft, phone snatching, and violence against women and girls. In 2024/25, the city police launched Operation Swipe to deter, detect, and prevent phone snatching. This combines targeted patrols with visible public messaging, including distinctive blue plaques marking hotspots and arrest locations. In the last quarter alone, snatch theft fell by 23% compared to the same period at the year before. Through intelligence-led policing, resources are being directed where they have the greatest effects. A quarter of violent offences occur in only 12%, 2% of our streets. Last year, over 11,000 additional patrol hours helped reduce serious violence and led to more than 250 arrests, making our streets safer and making our city a premier destination for all. Alongside this, the city police continues to lead nationally in tackling fraud, economic and cybercrime. Operation Henhouse Three, run in partnership with the National Crime Agency, intensified investigations into fraud, resulting in 440 arrests and 19 million in seizures, a 52% increase in arrests compared to the previous year. We are also working with partners to launch a new replacement service for action fraud later this year. This summer's appeal inspection graded the City of Police outstanding for crime recording and good for both crime investigation and response to the public, among the strongest results we've ever received, and bringing the City Police high up in the policing ranking. The outcome rate for violence against women and girls offences is now four times the national average. This is a real testament to the Commissioner, his leadership team, and everyone working for our police service, delivering high-quality policing in the city. These results truly underline the vital contribution that the City Police, working with this police authority, to ensure the City Square Mile remains safe, secure, and dynamic for all who live, work, and visit it, my Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Chairman. I was, I was waiting for the red light to come on there. Does any member wish to debate this item? Nope. Seeing none, the report is to receive, members. At item 11, there were no ballots taken at the last court, and so no results to report on. Moving to item 12, where the Right Honourable, the Lord Mayor, has received notice of two questions. Firstly, Deputy Madhush Gupta to ask a question of the Chairman of Policy and Resources.
My Lord Mayor, I rise to address a commitment made to this Honourable Court some 21 months ago by my Honourable friend, the Policy Chairman. At Coco in January 2024, I raised the urgent matter of our long overdue electoral review. The Policy Chairman assured us that the work would commence immediately after the election in March 2025. Half of our city wards have theoretically incorrect councillor allocations based on the 2010 voter registration data. That's not just untidy, it's a deficit affecting the very heart of our ancient democracy. The refresh is critical to keep our electoral rolls fully subscribed, something I know each of you works hard to do. Will the Policy Chairman now recommit to a specific completion date, not just a project plan, but a firm deadline for this electoral review and future reviews after each and every election cycle, my Lord Mayor?
Thank you, Deputy. Chairman.
My Lord Mayor, I thank the Honourable Member for notice of his question. To begin with, I would like to clarify that the work the Honourable Member refers to comprises of two separate reviews. Firstly, a ward boundary review, which is, I think, the premise of his question, and would cover, for instance, allocation of councillors towards, and secondly, secondly and separately, a franchise review, looking at who can vote in our elections and how. Now, I cannot, I cannot in all honesty to this Court today commit to a completion date for either, as both could take a number of years and have a significant resource considerations. And I would note that they would require phasing. The boundary review needs to take place before any review of the franchise. When Deputy Gupta raised this matter last year, the commitment I made was to discuss with the Town Clerk the arrangements needed to prepare for a review after our March elections, as he rightly says. And as those have passed, officers have now, as promised, begun preliminary work on the boundary review, the wards review. I must stress that this is likely to be a large piece of work, taking well over a year. Officers are currently working on a scoping report, so we have been doing things, Deputy, we just haven't brought them to this Court yet. They've committed to me, officers, so I can to you, that a report will be brought before your policy committee this year. As to a review of the franchise, this would come after the boundary review. It would involve a substantial piece of policy work to determine options and make recommendations, and as I say, significant resource would need to be identified for that work. Any changes to the franchise would necessitate a private bill in Parliament, which could not reasonably be taken forward until our Markets Bill has completed its parliamentary passage, still some way off. In short, my Lord Mayor, these are big, resource-intensive pieces of work, but they are fundamental importance to our democracy here, and we must make sure that they are done properly, as I'm sure the Deputy would want, my Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Chairman. Deputy, do you have a supplementary question? Okay, thank you. Any, Charles Edward Lord.
My Lord Mayor, I'm grateful to the Chairman for his answer, but I'm concerned that he is proposing that the issue of the franchise follows the issue of the ward boundary review. The franchise actually would have a significant impact on a ward boundary review because the ward boundary review has to be predicated, at least in part, on the number of electors. And if we're going to change the franchise, then that we will, that will have an impact on the ward boundaries and how many electors there are in each ward. Will he consider actually doing it the other way round? Thank you.
Thank you, Charles Edward Lord. Chairman.
I thank the Honourable Member for his, this question. So what is the argument as to why a boundary review has to take place before a franchise review? Well, it is simply this: we made commitments to Parliament to undertake boundary reviews, and so we need to do these before we take a bill to them regarding our franchise. What decisions the City Corporation make in a ward boundary review could, could massively impact how we seek to review the franchise. So, members need to be clear, there's a difference between things we can do ourselves, the ward boundary review, and things that require intervention through Parliament, the franchise review. And our resource can't be everywhere at once. We started the work on the ward boundary review, that's what I'm pushing to you to progress. If I give an example, the 2010 review, which was considered a stock review, took between 18 and 24 months to complete, and we know that the government is looking to bring forward an elections bill to make various electoral reforms. With that in mind, it also makes more sense to wait until that is done to consider changing our own. Making decisions on changes before then could just mean that we find ourselves out of sync with the national norm in fairly short order. So I genuinely advise, Honourable Members, I think it's worth seeing what happens, and then we can look. Whilst we wait, we can prioritise the ward boundary review. So that would be my advice and the explanation I give for why we should do the ward boundary review ahead of the franchise review, my Lord Mayor.
Just to remind members that under the newer standing orders, under this section, members have one question and no supplementary question, apart from the original questioner. The original questioner has a supplementary subsequent question, as have one question. If it's point of order procedurally, of course, then we can deal with that accordingly. Ms Leila Bolton to speak next. Thank you.
My Lord Mayor, I understand that the passage of the Markets Bill is being held up by an objection. Could you please tell us, Chairman, what is being done to address this objection, and when will we see a report on the learnings from the Markets fiasco? Thank you, my Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Ms Bolton. Chairman.
Well, my Lord Mayor, it is true, of course, that the bill is going through Parliament, and in, as in any democratic institution, the Parliament must take account of representations. And so, she's right, of course she's right, that where there are, where there are questions, it does delay the progress of the bill. Now, what I cannot tell her today is how significant a delay that is. We don't believe, officers tell me, that it will be a significant delay. There will be learnings from doing the bill, I agree with her. We have done bills before, we've taken bills to Parliament before. The only point I wouldn't agree with her wording on is that the Markets Bill is a fiasco. I don't think it is a fiasco, I think we are doing everything properly through our Members' Department, we are presenting it to Parliament in the correct way. Clearly, we have to be accountable for that bill, and I understand that, but I don't think it's fair to say that it's a fiasco because I don't believe it is, my Lord Mayor.
Ms Bolton, your hand is raised. Have you had point of order or point of explanation? Please rise.
Yes, thank you, my Lord Mayor. When I referred to the fiasco, I was not referring to the passage of the Markets Bill, but to the process whereby the city cancelled the move earlier. Thank you.
Thank you for clarification. Mr Groves.
My Lord Mayor, we're very fortunate in recent years to have a huge amount of planning activity, particularly in the eastern cluster, and a great sign of confidence in London that developers are putting in some fantastic developments over the coming, over the coming years. In my own ward of Tower, we're seeing on the side of the cloth workers building a five or six-storey building being replaced by a 30-storey building that will take from, from hundreds of people working there to several thousand. Will the Policy Chairman agree that the, in the review of the ward boundaries, that we will look at the future worker population and not based on the current worker population, given the pipeline of tall buildings that we have coming in to those wards that are impacted in the cluster, my Lord Mayor?
Thank you, Mr Groves. Chairman.
My Lord Mayor, the Honourable Member makes an excellent point, and it's a point that I know has been raised in, in previous boundary reviews as well, and I think he's right that we must not look at where we are today, we must look at everything that the information tells us about growth and planning decisions that are being taken at the moment, and, and we must look to base our numbers around that. So I'm grateful to the Honourable Member for bringing that issue before the Court because he's absolutely right, we need to look to the future, not just the present, my Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Chairman. Mr Goodman.
My Lord Mayor, well, I think I have to agree with Edward Lord here, and in fact, I think you, Policy Chair, just have agreed with Edward Lord because you've just said in the ward boundary review, we will take into consideration anything we know about new offices in certain wards. And one of the issues about franchise in the corporation, which will require a parliamentary change, is that at the moment, you, you have to be on the register, if you're a resident, on the 1st of September prior to the election to get a vote. Nowhere else in the country is that the case. Everywhere else, there was a rolling list of ward, and anybody who's a resident later on, like every student who lives in the Square Mile, would be eligible to vote. We need to make a decision about whether we want to catch up with the rest of the country or not, and if we do, then it will significantly change the number of members in each ward, as will new office buildings across it. So I think Mr Lord is dead right that we actually need to do the franchise review first. The fact that it's, needs to get through Parliament, I think is a little bit of a red herring. Thank you, my Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Goodman. Chairman.
My Lord Mayor, I certainly don't want to take on the might of Deputy Lord and Mr Goodman at the same time, but I beg to, I beg to differ. Look, the rolling registration, which is often raised in this Court, is a really, really good point, and frankly, I support it, I would like to see rolling registration. It's what we do throughout the rest of the country, as you say, Mr Goodman, but it's not within our gift to enact, it does require legislation. Now, given that it falls within the scope, rolling registration of the franchise review, as you are, as you are implying and as you are saying, and of course, we're only going to go to Parliament once, we have one opportunity, frankly, when we go to Parliament, I want to make sure that any approach is coherent, well-thought-through, and all the changes we might seek to make through a franchise review are included, that we don't do it piecemeal, in other words, and that's why we want to pick up all the changes that members might wish to make, rather than picking off these things piecemeal, and I think we would be doing that. So I stand by my original assertion that the ward review should, in the best interests of the City Corporation, come ahead of the franchise review, and I'm sorry to park company with my two colleagues on this occasion, my Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Chairman. Any other members? Okay, thank you. Next then, Josephine Hayes to ask a question of the Chairman of Policy and Resources. Ms Hayes.
Last Wednesday, the Lord Mayor said that through the Mansion House Compact and Accord, we're making sure that some of the huge sums in the hands of British pension funds are being invested in technology. Will the Chair of Policy and Resources confirm that this Court of Common Council is acutely conscious that one of the main reasons for the 2008 financial crisis was excessive risk-taking in the years leading up to it, and that the government had to bail out a number of lenders which were too big to fail at immense cost to the UK taxpayer, and that since pension funds are responsible for safeguarding long-term pensions for their members, British Pension Fund trustees must be left to decide what risks they're prepared to take without being influenced to engage in high-risk investments?
Thank you, Ms Hayes. Chairman.
My Lord Mayor, I thank the Honourable Member for notice of her question. At their heart, both the Mansion House Compact and the Accord are about getting the best possible retirement outcomes for hard-working people across the country. Nothing in the Accord, nothing in the Accord alters the legal, consumer, or fiduciary duties of the signatories or dilutes wider regulatory protections. We must recognise that only 30% of the United Kingdom population are on track to achieve a moderate standard of living in retirement. are on track to achieve a moderate standard of living in retirement. Both these initiatives aim to tackle this by encouraging the deployment of capital into productive assets. The Accord builds on the Compact with a voluntary, and I stress that word, a voluntary agreement amongst the signatories, that 10% of default funds will be invested into private markets with a minimum of 5% directed towards UK-based assets. It's worth noting that UK pension funds are materially underweight in these asset classes compared with our international peers, many of whom are giving much better pensions to their citizens. Specifically in relation to risk, I can assure the honourable member that as part of our extensive engagement with industry on this issue, pension companies' fiduciary duty to their investors was at the forefront of our minds, and it remains legally binding on them. Nothing in the Accord changes that. So this is not, I can assure her, a return to the kind of short-term leverage and opaque products that fuelled the 2008 financial crisis. These are long-term, real economy investments designed to diversify portfolios and, when properly managed, reduce systemic risk. What we have is a model that balances fiducial duty with an appropriate risk appetite to achieve better returns for savers. Trustees will always be the ones making decisions on behalf of their members, not the City of London Corporation, not the government, it is the trustees of those funds. All the City Corporation has done has simply played a pivotal role in creating a framework to help guide those decisions, my Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Chairman. Ms. Hayes, do you have a supplementary question? No. Chief Commissar.
Thank you, my Lord Mayor. As many of you all know, I spent my working career in asset management. And this week, I was at a private equity and venture capital conference, a room full of brilliant British entrepreneurs looking for investors, investing for growth. And I think, I believe that's what this country needs. And I think if we don't invest here in the UK, then we're going to lose out to other major markets. So I thank the chairman very much for setting out the information on the Mansion House Accord. And as a past master of the Guild of Investment Managers, when I look at the current pension landscape, I see the UK... I know the UK was a frontrunner in terms of running money in this space. But it looks like we've lost our crown to maybe Australia and Canada in many ways. What are we doing to create the best possible environment for the industry and savers alike, my Lord Mayor?
Thank you, chief. Chairman.
My Lord Mayor, I thank the chief commoner for his question. He refers to the Australian and the Canadian pension schemes. And one thing that is particularly striking is the appetite that both of these schemes have for investing in the United Kingdom, particularly in private assets such as infrastructure. The question then is what more should UK capital be doing, given the proposition is clearly so strong for others? And the Mansion House Accord not only shifts the mindset into investment into higher-growth assets, but it also contains a provision for half of the allocation to go into the United Kingdom in the way that our cousins in Australia and Canada have already been doing and are doing. Fundamentally, within these reforms, people are investing in pensions to enjoy the retirement that they deserve, but also, of course, investing in the society that they want to retire into. The Accord and the wider pension reforms proposed by the government take us in a far more positive direction, I believe, which should be underpinned by a supportive regulatory regime that encourages, as I said in my original answer, responsible risk-taking as we laid out in our Regulating for Growth Report published earlier this year, my Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Chairman. All clear? In which case we shall proceed. Under item 13, there are no resolutions. 14, there are no dockets for the seal. At 15, no report. We now turn to item 16 and the motion to exclude the public. The right honourable, the Lord Mayor, has been informed of several matters for consideration after the public have withdrawn from the meeting. And the chief commoner has placed a motion on the summons to exclude the public whilst these items are considered. Is the motion seconded? The chairman of the Finance Committee.
My Lord Mayor, I second the motion.
Thank you, Chairman. Members, that is to agree. On the contrary, the Lord Mayor declares the motion to be carried. Will members of the public and officers in the public gallery kindly withdraw? And could the live stream please be ended?